... which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the role of the commission and then our guests, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Campenzi?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
Mayor Coine?
Here.
Ms. Beckman?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Bonzal?
Here.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Truskin?
Here.
Ms. Rotundo?
Here.
Mr. Malato?
Here.
Ms. Johnson? And Ms. Collins?
Here.
Thank you. I want to welcome the members of the student government here, some of the representatives. This we do every year, to give them a taste of city government, to have them have a better understanding of how their city works, and also encourage them to look at community service as a possible career. So, welcome, glad that you're here. At the end of the meeting, if you would like, during Commissioner comments, feel free to say anything you would like. Unfortunately, you can't vote tonight, so that's probably, you're lucky. Okay. Commission, is there, are there any agenda changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Reynolds?
Move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Mr. Baldini?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those please say yes, if you're in favor of that?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, the agenda stands as submitted. The first thing I have is an announcement. This was a late addition, and I, we have some guests from Girl State, and Patty Stevens is here. Patty, could you come forward to this microphone right here? Thank you for coming, and what's on your mind this evening?
Hi, Patty Stevens, Girl State Scholarship Chairman, American Legion Auxiliary Unit 44 here in Marquette. And this year, we had an amazing turnout of applicants for our program. We had sixteen girls interviewed the other night, and only four scholarships that we were giving. However, that's changed as of today, twelve are currently going. We still have four alternates at the moment. But anyways, the Girl State program is interactive mock government setup where the students actually spend a week down at Michigan State University, and it's quite a thrill. I see one gentleman here that's a boy state. But anyways, they're quite talented kids, usually the brightest and best, that apply for these programs. The Marquette City Commission has been such a strong supporter of our programs that we felt an appropriate certificate of appreciation for their support. Last year, a delegation from the city consisted of Mayor Robert Baldini, manager Bill Vida, and Commissioner Campenzi did come and speak at our reception orientation. Each year, we have a reception orientation because our students can't make it to the orientation downstate. It's financially unfeasible for us to get them there for that, so we make our own. I was thrilled tonight when Mayor Coine did say that he was going to see what he could do to fit it in his schedule to be a presenter this year, and also probate Judge Cheryl Hill has accepted as speaking this year. But anyways, I would like to present the certificate of appreciation, and then I brought some of the girls with me this evening, and would like to introduce them, or they're going to come up and introduce themselves and say whether they are alternate or delegate status. And more would have come, however, they're busy kids, and a lot of them couldn't fit it in their schedule tonight with such short notice from just this past week. So anyways, thank you very much, the City of Marquette and the commission, for all the support that you give our programs, and I'll give this to the mayor.
Thank you. You're going to introduce the?
They're going to each come up and introduce themselves.
Ladies?
Hi, my name is Rachel Shawn. I'm a 2015 Girl State delegate, and I'm excited to be here today with all of you to learn more about our city government.
I'm Casey Muller. I'm a 2015 Girl State delegate, and I'm excited for the opportunity to learn more about how our state government works.
I'm Molly Gudrow, and I'm a 2015 Girl State delegate, and thank you for having me here today.
Hi, I'm Morgan Collins, and I am an alternate for the 2015 Girl State, and I'm hoping to be sponsored soon. Thank you.
I'll say one thing. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this. During our interviews, we had one of our applicants who had an interesting idea that we thought the city might be interested in. She's going to say a few words about that.
Hi, I'm Nora Gaffney. I'm a 2015 Girl State delegate, and I'm here today to talk about an issue that has come to my attention in the Marquette community. Living in a community that is so progressive and one of the best communities in the U.P., I noticed that we are using city bags, but they're very large, and you fit about two kitchen-sized bags within one city bag. And I felt that a way to fix this might be to make smaller city bags, so we would use less plastic. I looked up, and there's about 8,071 residents, our households in Marquette, and in the city alone, we're using about 24,000 bags every Tuesday. So if we didn't use the city bags and we used instead, like, smaller city bags, we would only be using about 16,000, but they would be smaller, so it would be less, too. And yep, I have a proposal I'll give to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice job, ladies. Appreciate you coming. And Commissioner Baldini, I see out of the corner of my eye, would like to say something. Could I just make a mention? I've asked, no, no, fine, I think I was going to talk to the commission for a minute. Please pull the microphone closer to you. Last meeting, a lot of people could not hear us, so if you could bring the microphone close to you when you speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just, what does a scholarship cost, Patty?
A scholarship, including the transportation, is $450 to $5 per student.
Thank you. You want to say something? Commissioner Campenzi?
Sure. It was quite an honor to actually attend the ceremony last year and see the interesting girls going. This year, it's almost, it's almost like there's double the interest, which is great. I told Patty Stevens last year that I would help try and find the money, and I think it was the beginning of May when we started, and I believe most of the commissioners sent in some money. I sent a few letters out to some other people in government, and we did raise the money quite quickly. So this year, do we only need four scholarships, or?
Right. And actually, last year, when there was a bit left over, that's how we started with four this year, because we directly applied for the following year if there's extra.
Wow. Well, I would like to put the challenge out there to my fellow commissioners once again, and hope that you'll join me in donating to this great cause. And then, also, hopefully there's more interest in the boys state. I don't know if?
Their applications are due at the end of March, so they haven't had their interviews yet.
Okay. And I would be also willing to donate to that if my fellow male commissioners would help donate to this. So, thank you for coming, Patty. It's great what you do, and I wish all the candidates good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to say anything? Commissioner Reynolds?
Not much to add, but I echo what Commissioner Campenzi said, and I would also, if you need somebody else to be at the reception orientation, I wouldn't mind attending as well, Ms. Patty. And I will also be putting forth a donation for the girls.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, commissioners, and thank you very much for coming, and I'm glad we could squeeze you in with that. It's very important, and good luck to you. I hope you enjoy your experience, and I hope that it makes you think about sometime doing some public service in government, at whatever level. And I just pointed out to you, when you're eighteen, you can run for city commission, too. Okay, so we need younger people doing it. So, thank you. Yeah, thanks for coming, and you don't feel, if you want to leave, that's fine. So, okay, thank you. No other announcements. Next would be boards and committees. We're going to recognize Walt Anderson and Trey Huddle. Walt and Trey? Walt, it makes me sad to have you retire from the Board of Review. You've done such an outstanding job, and I hope that you will consider continuing to serve in some manner, and thank you very much for your years of service and a great job you've done.
Thank you very much.
Anything you'd like? I have to, do you have a whole, long speech prepared or anything? Like the last person I did this to?
No, I do not.
Would you like to say something?
No, I will not.
Okay, well, thank you. And Trey, thank you very much. You were on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and again, we appreciate your efforts. That's a very tough job to do, and we appreciate your time and effort. Thank you. And if you would like to say anything, you're welcome to.
I'd just like to say, for anybody to get involved with the city, it's a good opportunity. You know, it's once a week and some review, but it's a good, it's a good chance to get involved and see what's going on with your city. So if anybody has any interest, speak to the city and Justin Vasso.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Walt. Have to squeeze in here, sorry. I also am going to welcome a new member who was unable to come tonight, Brett Schwenke. He is going to serve on the Wastewater Treatment Advisory Committee. And we have an appointment, a motion for the appointment of Ed Banos to the DDA for a term ending January 1st, 2019. Commissioner Conley?
I move that the City Commission approve the appointment of Ed Banos to the Downtown Development Authority for a term ending January 1, 2019.
Commissioner Campana?
I second that.
Any discussion?
None.
All right, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? No? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Just on these boards and commissions, we are still looking for lots of people. We have a committee that's going to wrap up their work on how to get more people to serve. And I think those of you who watch this regularly, everyone who serves just says the same thing. It's very rewarding, and they enjoy it, and I would encourage people to come and sign up. There's lots of vacancies. So with that, we're moving on to public comment. Public comment would allow anyone who wishes to speak to come forward to that microphone there. You have three minutes to speak. Upon speaking, please state your name, address, and city or township of residence. If you wish to reserve an item, to speak on an item, please just say so, and we'll put your name there, and you can speak after the item agenda is read. So, anyone wishing to come forward, please do so.
Hello, Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Road. I was up here last week, and I had to run away. Sorry about that, but everything's kind of settled down. Figured I should try to explain myself. After talking to a few neighbors, I was kind of rushed, so I'm very sorry about that. I do want to say, you guys do a great job, and thanks for listening to us. It would be nice to have a more of a discussion. This is more of a dictation, my thoughts, your thoughts, but I'll leave it at that. After discussing with my neighbors, we came across, when we were discussing snow removal, like when the plows come by and get rid of all the snow and push it in your driveway, you guys are included, right? We're all affected by this. What I was reminded of is that we pay a waste, yard waste fee every month, and yet, in the wintertime, it seems like there's no real yard waste other than snow. And since we are nationally recognized, even today came out, we have more than Boston, I, when I come up and say these somewhat negative comments, it's more of a coaching. Sorry, I'm a, I was taught by, or I was raised by a coach and a teacher and a referee, so I have a little way of getting around things. It's more of a less, I would like Boston, New York, Providence to turn and say, when we get this much snow, what does Marquette, Michigan do? That's what I mean. What do we do with our yard waste? When you're discussing a new municipal building, I would love to have a warming hut so that we dump a bunch of snow in there and it melts away. Again, that's something that big cities happen to require. We don't happen to have that. We've got enough space to find our own melting point. But it sticks around a lot longer. My point is, we are paying every day for services that seems like, in the wintertime, they get shut down. I know they're not, because I met, I will officially say, I was walking my dog along one of the bike paths and came across one of the plows. By all means, they do a great job. They gave me space. They allowed us to stay off to the side and not get in their way, cleared out the space perfectly. It's that that I would like other cities to look to us and say, thank you, Marquette, that's how you do it, in the modern times. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. I neglected to mention the timing thing. There's a timer there, and then this is like a stoplight. Green is go, yellow is you have one minute, then a red, it starts blinking in thirty seconds, and then it'll stay on after three minutes. So I'm sorry for forgetting that. Yes, Mr. Verito?
Thank you, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on items five and six. These are my opinions. February 9th, Campana justified CR 595 by saying the road is already there, as if dirt roads compared to engineered throughways. If the road were there, they'd be using it. He also claimed not hearing from a soul who's against it, oblivious to the majority who opposed it, after the bureaucrats left the EPA hearing. Dave pretends the detailed record doesn't exist. Conley mentioned decreased trip time, ignoring this board's failure to protest the known hall routes during the mine application process. Campenzi cited the lack of transparency, which I feel prevailed throughout our six-year ordeal. We need a critical mass to stop the big-money interests from snubbing us this way. February 9th, you rushed a choice of service center sites unaware of the proposed hospital footprint. We cannot know if a new center is needed until we see a drawing. Campenzi advised a serious conversation with DLP, which we haven't had. Our costs have exceeded the limit. We need due diligence, she said. Wouldn't you know, a doctor and an ex-pharmacist ignored her and motioned anyway. Coine, in his closing comments, pounded on my positive remarks about Marquette's designation as a world-best place to travel. It's not just natural resources, he said, but the quality of the city. I'd said largely the nature, not entirely. People, restaurants, and more contributed, which I lacked time to say. Coine also should note that these qualities emanate from our natural attributes. Our notoriety isn't just about city officials, it's about all of us. Much credit goes to our entrepreneurs. Coine added, the quality of the city speaks well despite the negative repetitive things we get said about us and the constant negativity. So Coine's comment was positive, yet my constant recognition of our city's beauty is negative. You're all about who says what, not the validity of what is said. Now, that's repetition. I've never cut down Marquette and seldom City Hall. The problem is your manner of business. You see, Coine berates based on generalities while I back allegations with specifics. He has a unique way of attracting what he doesn't wish to hear and repeats this behavior. June 30, 2014, he heard my response to his June 9th jab, and last January 12th, my response to his December 8th jab, and he keeps jabbing, realizing what reaction he provokes. There lies the true repetition. Such repetition is foolish. In fact, this mentality is reminiscent of his January 30, 2012 men's rooms threats against me in an exhibition that the public needed to hear to believe. His impulsiveness lacks self-control, maturity, and decency. He must realize that these negative responses to his provocations further no one's cause. No one looks good. The main difference is, he holds an elected position.
Good evening. Barry Poleson, 413 North Front. I'm here to speak on item number six.
Good evening. You're Malankian, 8 Market Drive. What an incredible way to twist the English language, but that's the beauty of English language. You can take it any way you wish. On a more happier note, and the earlier conversation, I have had the incredible privilege to represent the city of Marquette on landfill authority for many, many years. After the terms were changed, now I'm representing the county on the same landfill authority. So I encourage people that are out there to be on these committees, and you end up being a vice chair and all the other things, and you end up doing good and bad and whatever else, but hopefully you do good for the entire community, and in this case, we're doing things for the entire county. And so, we as individuals do make an incredible difference in our community by being involved. So I do encourage other people to step up to the plate and participate in community volunteer efforts. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come up and speak or reserve time on an agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, the public comment time. We move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda? Commissioner Campana?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Commissioner Conley?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Campana, any comments?
No further comments.
Conley?
None.
Call the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as is as presented, please say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. That motion passes. The next, item number five. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number five, please?
Thank you, sir. Background, as June 9, 2014 meeting, the City Commission approved a proposal totaling $22,340 with U.P. engineers and architects to provide professional services of site utility, architectural, structural, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical design for constructing four permanent restrooms at Harlow, McCarty's Cove, Freskile, and Williams Parks. The total project budget is $520,000, of which 74 percent of the project costs are funded through two Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust fund grants, and the balance, or $135,200, is local match. The project has required alterations due to extensive site and civil work at both Freskile and Williams Parks. Alterations have resulted in design and engineering changes. U.P. engineering and architects has provided the city with a change order totaling $6,089 for additional required services. Attached correspondence dated February 3, 2015, outlines the proposed services. If approved, U.P. engineers and architects professional service agreement would total $28,429, or approximately 6 percent of the projected budget. The grant agreement allows for up to 10 percent of the project budget to be allocated towards engineering and design services. Total project with proposed change order is estimated within budget. Fiscal effect, amend professional service agreement for U.P. engineers and architects by $6,089. The contract total will now be $28,429. Recommendation, approve U.P. engineers and architects amendment to the agreement for the provision of professional services of $6,089, making the not-to-exceed contract amount $28,429, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, you wish to speak on this item?
Thank you, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. July 14, 2014, you first heard me stress the importance of including lots 5, 6, and 7 in the proposed park. The buffer was grossly inadequate, as obvious from the site plan. Although the proponents did not address this concern, by their August 25, 2014 reading, lot 7 along the Dead River was no longer depicted as developable on the site plan. That night, I begged the developer to mention our need to acquire lots 5 and 6, being as much in her interest as anyone's. Building homes there would disjoin the east and west ends of the park, connected by two narrow a buffer along the Dead River. Just because the mill was once located there, is no reason not to develop this park into all it can be. Are any measures being undertaken to acquire lot 6, end quote? The proponent made my day by announcing that lot 6, the most imposing of the two, was in the process of acquisition to buffer the park. An untrained eye upon a short peek at the site plan can determine why this addition is so imperative. He also saw the importance of adding the triangular buffer called the first priority part of lot 3. This has the effect of buffering the future development parcel from the west. Of course, incorporating all property north and east of the drive into the park would be ideal, but I don't want to be seen as someone who expects everything to remain natural. Thank you to the proponents of Lambros Park for their vision and for realizing the importance of buffer zones to protect their investment in our public lakeshore. Their urge to keep every aspect of the park as natural appearing as humanly possible. Acquiring lot 5 would further our cause to make this park all it can be.
Commission, is there a motion? Anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that the City Commission appoint the U.P. engineers and architects amendment, or approve the U.P. engineers and architects amendment to the agreement for the provision of professional services of $6,089, making the not-to-exceed contract amount $28,429, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
Is there support? Commissioner Campana?
Support.
No. Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Commissioner Conley?
It's going to be great to have bathrooms at these parks.
That's it? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Campana?
I agree with Commissioner Conley. I also have a question. What changes were made briefly? Can someone in staff state that? Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask Community Services Director Zucker to speak to this.
Again, if I could ask people to stand or sit close to the microphone, we could not hear the clerk, so closer when you talk. Thank you.
Certainly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There were two significant changes. Initially, we had two restrooms that were designed for 400 square feet apiece, and two that were 600 square feet. We reduced the two that were 600 feet down to 400, so they'll be consistent throughout the park system. That saved approximately $180,000 with that change. The second piece was, is we took some of the rock facade off the sides. We saved approximately $20,000 with taking rock facade off. And so it'll be a split-faced colored concrete block or a cut-colored concrete block decorative for the siding.
Okay. Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Campenzi?
Just real quick, what is the timeframe again for these?
Well, the, we'd like to finish the design and get them to the Department of Natural Resources for a plan review. That takes approximately three weeks, and so if we can get the, once we get the design approved, then we'll bid it out. So probably six to eight weeks before it comes back to the commission.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion as read by Commissioner Conley, please say yes?
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We'll move on to item number six. Madam Clerk, if you could move the microphone closer and read it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Home Renewal Systems LLC is requesting a payment in lieu of taxes in accordance with Public Act 346 of 1966 as amended to facilitate support of the submission of federal low-income tax credits through the Michigan State Housing and Development Authority that are necessary for their proposed project to be feasible. Fiscal effect, a detailed analysis of potential revenues via payment in lieu of taxes will be provided prior to the hearing. Recommendation, schedule a public hearing for March 9, 2015 to review the request. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. I could hear you. Appreciate it. Mr. Verito?
Thanks, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge Marquette. These are my opinions. And first, I'd like to apologize if my last comment, for some reason, didn't pertain to the item.
That's correct.
And I researched that someplace and got the information. So I will be checking that out. And I do apologize to the public. Please schedule the public hearing to give us our due opportunity to influence any land use of the orphanage site. You previously heard an idea to move the services at the Defont Building to the old orphanage, which would operate in concert with the adjacent Jacobetti Home for Veterans. The low-value Defont Building would then be cleared to create high-value public space in an expanded ice rink between the courthouse and the current underutilized rink. From then on, the nondescript Defont Building would no longer interrupt an outstanding view of our nationally recognized courthouse. If you take a few precious minutes to stand there and visualize the value of this improvement, we'd open an opportunity to further our worthiness as a global travel destination.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there a motion regarding this item? Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we schedule a public hearing for March 9, 2015 to review the request.
Thank you. Commissioner? What? Oh, Barry, I'm sorry. I forgot you.
Go ahead and take your action now. I just actually here just to answer any questions and just talk briefly. We're planning on doing an actual presentation at the public hearing, if you do schedule that. We're hoping that. But as we all know, the orphanage has been this wonderful building sitting there through all of our lives here. And we all have some connection with it. So we're really, I'm excited. I've been looking at that building for 30 years, off and on, watching it slowly melt. But it's structurally sound and it's a great project. And we've got a willing developer here right as a step forward. So if anybody has any questions, I'll certainly entertain them.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry. Commissioner Reynolds, did you wish to second the motion?
Second.
Okay. Discussion regarding scheduling the public hearing.
I think we can save comments for later, but I, it's an exciting thing to see someone who might actually be coming forth, willing to put some money into this project. It's been a, do we say an eyesore? But it's been a building in search of a use. And I think if it does come off, a lot of people will be very pleased with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Only that I agree with Commissioner Baldini. And also, I did some background research on Home Renewal Systems LLC. And they have a very good reputation for my initial research of continuing projects. And they're being very successful. So that's all I have to add.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Commissioner Kimpenzie?
Just a question. This property is currently owned by, I guess I'd like to ask staff and maybe the city attorney. It is owned by another party. And I know we've had some legal trials with them to get tax payments. How does this shake out?
Actually, we haven't had any problems with the people who own the building now. But it is owned by someone other than the people who are coming here to talk about development. As far as I know, the last we checked.
Correct. I'm sorry. I was speaking of the other people. So it has been sold?
It's been in other hands for a few years now.
Okay.
But you're right. They don't, the people who own the property are not the people I think that Mr. Posen represents.
Could you clarify that? Does this company that wants to have this development, do they own the property now?
I do not believe they own the property, Your Honor. I think, though, from the letter that I saw, that they intended to buy it or they were in negotiations to buy it. There was something in the correspondence.
Okay.
I don't have it with me. But it's my understanding they do not own the property.
Mr. Posen, could you come forward?
May I address that? Home Renewal Systems has entered into a purchase agreement with the Moranto Trust, which owns the property. He actually, they actually met in Las Vegas and signed a deal. And the Moranto Trust is very, very eager to move on from the ownership and is totally supportive of going through the whole process that we have to go through.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kimpenzie. That was a good question. Any other comments from commissioners? Seeing none. The motion to schedule a public hearing as submitted for March 9. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. That will be scheduled. And I think we'll have lots of interesting things to say and hear at that time. And thank you for coming to talk about that. Next item is comments from the commission. Start with Commissioner Reynolds.
Don't really have any additional comments this evening. The only thing is that I had a chance to go to the Rail Jam, which I've seen many of my other commissioners there this weekend. Went the first year. Super fun. This year was even better. The DDA did an awesome job. So much fun. Great layout. I've seen, there was tons of people there. A very broad spectrum of people as well. And I hope that we continue to do it. And that is all for this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also went down for the Rail Jam. And I just thought it was so typical Marquette. I mean, we plowed the streets every day. And then we decided to take all the snow and put it back there. And then we take it out again. But it's what makes Marquette, Marquette. And it was quite a crowd. It was a different demographic crowd than usual. And that's good. And seemed to be a lot of excitement, a lot of enthusiasm. And I think it's a great addition. The new location was good. And I didn't see the bike race or the big, what did we call it? The big? The big tube bike race, yeah. It must have been really cold on that one. But I do think it was a great addition. And I'm also anxious to hear about the orphanage property and see what the proposal is because of, that building has been there for a long time. And it would be great to see it turned into some useful endeavor. Thank you.
Commissioner Connolly?
Actually, since our last meeting, we've had three major winter sports events. We've had the dog sled race, which was a big success and really quite enjoyable. And the Fat Tire Bike Race. And then the Rail Jam. And I want to thank all those who helped arrange those and all of our guests who came into town to enjoy those with us. I had a chance to meet with a lot of those. And people are really enthusiastic about coming to Marquette for winter events. I would like to wish our mayor, our mayor pro tem, our city manager, and our finance director well as they travel to Lansing to testify in front of the Michigan Economic Development Commission in favor of our Brownfield application, so we can move ahead with our projects. And thank you for going. I know you're going to be driving into the night and then early in the morning to get there. But we wish you good fortune in those discussions. I'd like to point out, the commissioners received a letter from one of our guests from out of town who had attended the dog sled race. Actually, had been going to, rather, had been to the trail system, the Hartwood Forest, thanking us for having that trail system and pointing out that the Hartwood is not an expense. It's really an investment for all of us and all of our guests who come to town and enjoy our town with us. And just a quick note, I was in Econo the other day. There is a small trash bag available. It's $1.30, not $1.50. And it's maybe two-thirds of the size. It's not, it's a little over half the size. That started out, apparently sometime a few weeks ago, they made them available. So we're using less plastic. And people who don't put out much trash can use a smaller bag.
Okay. Commissioner Campana?
I also was down at the Showdown Ski and Snowboard Jam Rail on Front Street this weekend. And I also thought very good exhibition put on by, the DDA did a very good project there along with other business sponsors and area restaurants. It was my first time. I didn't go last year, but I was encouraged to go this year. And I'm going to go next year and each year thereafter. It's really a fun event. You see young kids doing crazy things on skis and boards. And just a lot of fun, a lot of people. And again, where else do you find a city that puts on their main street, you know, major operation like that? The only disappointing thing was the mayor was there. He is a skier. I expected him to take the first run down the obstacle course, but he declined to do so. Yeah. Also, there was the Fat Tire Polar Roll Bike Race. And first one, and they had good participation. And I think it's a thing that's going to just grow exponentially in the years to come. Fat bike, biking, Fat Tire biking is coming on very fast here, all over the country. And Marquette's probably leading the way. Lastly, I would say, suggest again, if you would go online, Google Craft, Hockeyville, state something nice about Lakeview Arena, and that'll help us in running for some grant money that could come our way. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
I'd like to say thanks to the mayor for meeting me at the airport when I came back from vacation. It was nice to see you. But I do have a complaint. You didn't help me with my bags. So you need to kind of work on that. I see the marina rates are going up again. I think a lot of boaters are not happy about it, but they'll deal with it. I think we need to find a way to maybe make it a boat-friendly community or kind of get a reputation for not being boater-friendly. And we're bike-friendly. We're trail-friendly. I think we just need to work on maybe trying to find a way to make it more friendly to use the waterfront. That's not like how I'm running that. And I was at the Rail Jam, too. Good time with other commissioners and look forward to next year.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimpenzie?
I'd like to start off again by saying how awesome I think it is that we have so many of our youth interested in Girls and Boys State. I'm going to speak to the boys that are sitting up here with us tonight. And hopefully, if you're eligible, you'll apply. And if you're not yet, hopefully in the coming years, you'll think about it. Coming on 21 years since I graduated and I took AP government, but I had no interest in doing anything with government at the time. But things change. And my interest was continually in learning and contributing and being a part of the community that you're fortunate to be a part of. I know a lot of you might want to get out and do new things. But what I've found is a lot of my friends that went away, once they're away for a little bit, they realize how great of a community we really have. And again, I look forward to contributing both to Girls and Boys State. So hopefully, there'll be a big outpouring. So I'd like to thank each of our high school students for sitting up here with us tonight. You picked an easy meeting, which I guess all of us would like to invite you back to one of our three-hour meetings. It's a little different. You know, and hopefully, you've seen some people get appointed tonight. You've seen some people whose service was up on our committees. But I think they would tell you and all of us would tell you that it's an invaluable experience. You're contributing to your community. You can find a committee that you have interests with. And you learn a lot from having to work and negotiate with people that might not have the same ideas or views that you do. And I see that we have a lot of northern students out there. I would like to just say that I came across a really interesting article this weekend in the New York Times. And it was about thanking veterans. And I'm not sure if anyone else read that. But what struck me about it was, you know, when we thank veterans, a lot of us who haven't served don't know how it feels or the reasons why people go and serve. And in the comments section, I think what was most striking to me and what many veterans would like us to do is thank them, but also vote. Be involved in your city government. If there's an issue you feel passionately about, check it out. Get your news sources from many different magazines, newspapers, online stuff. But be involved. But most importantly, make sure you get out and vote. And so after that, go ahead and thank them again. But I thought that was really striking, as all of us, I guess, could be more involved in the things going on. Lastly, our community lost a brave soul and a great kid. And many of you probably know him, Cody Revoard. It's not easy. And I've lost a few classmates along the way. But as you go through life, life is short. And appreciate those around you, because you never know when each of us will have our last day. So thanks again for being here with us.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimpenzie? Just a couple of brief comments. Back to the garbage bags. I don't think they're small enough. So I think you should continue your efforts. Okay? They need to be smaller. For a single person, it's very hard to fill up even the smaller ones. So I think you still have, you're on to something. And we'll beat on the department to work on that. And frankly, it took about 25 years to get them to even do this one. So it's progress. It's government. Again, thank you all for coming. And I would hope that those northern students and the students from Market High learned a little bit about the quality of people serving their community and the people who work for the city, what quality people they are. And again, thank you very much for coming. And kind of combining what Commissioner Kimpenzie said, the value of learning. It's just amazing how much you learn doing this. And it's also amazing how, what quality people you meet serving with. So I hope you remember this as you progress in your life. Now comes the hard part. I'm going to ask any of you, and I'll start down at the end with you. Morgan, would you like, and feel free to say, thank you for coming. I don't have anything to say. But if you have anything, please feel free. This is a time to say. And you'll be on television. You can watch yourself talking to make you feel extra nervous, okay?
Just thank you for this opportunity. It's been a really great experience to be here, see how everything works.
Welcome. Next?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for letting us come and meet all of you and experience an aspect of Marquette's government and to see the passion that our community has and the genuine effort to improve our city.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thanks for having us and allowing us to see the inside of what you guys do.
I would like to thank the commission for letting us come up here. And yes, I do plan on coming to one of the three-hour meetings.
Really?
Yeah. Maybe down that side.
I'd like to echo what they said. Even though it was a short meeting, it was still a great experience to see how it worked. And yeah, hopefully, we will come back. Thanks for having us.
First, I'd just like to say to Perry, I've been to one of the three-hour meetings. And it's quite an undertaking, so. But in all seriousness, I think it's incredibly encouraging to see people in our generation. We often have, I believe, an undeserved reputation for not being civically involved. And seeing people from Girls State, from Student Council, from NMU at this meeting, making up really the majority of the people here is incredibly encouraging. So thank you for the opportunity to attend the meeting.
I'd also just like to thank the commission. And I'd also like to say you're doing a very good job, from what I can tell. You're making it a better community for our future generations. So thank you.
I'd like to say thanks as well for having us here. And this was a really good experience. And I have a growing, like, wanting to know more about our community and how it works. And this was a really, it was a good experience.
Thank you all for your comments. And I think your observation, if you look at the audience, the vast majority of people here are young, which is really neat. And you're going to live here a lot longer than we are now. So thanks for your interest. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments?
Nothing could follow that, sir. Thank you very kindly.
Well, Chloe, I'll give you this, and you get the pleasure of, class dismissed. Okay? Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.